Remind us to tear off the bells. Next one.
Ms. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Corburg?
Yes.
Mr. Sfivie?
Excused. A quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of December 20th, 2021 is called to order. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board. With the motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Hearing no motion to amend, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion has carried. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce music teacher Jason Harden and the Lincoln Middle School Holiday Brass, who are going to perform an additional song for us. Looking forward to it.
Two of us consent, or if else please stand for just a couple more minutes. Thank you so much. Hello, if you haven't met me or know me, my name's Mr. Harden, Jason Harden, teacher at Lincoln Middle School. Just a few things about it, so we are really happy to be able to bring this tradition back to this December Board meeting. I was thinking that we've done this for over 10 years, and I was saying that this group was pat here two years ago, but that was the year we actually changed it up and brought our winter winds from our school. So for a number of years now, we have several chamber ensembles that we do during this time of year. In the middle of the fall, we rehearse a whole bunch of songs, and then December, we play around the community rotary lights we did last week, and at our concert and other locations. And this as well. We also usually go to Madison, so I'm very happy to report, we had a great experience. I think it was about a week and a half ago, all of our groups got to go perform in the Governor's Tree Lighting Ceremony on December 3rd. So that was a great thrill. Afterward, the Governor had to leave in a hurry, but the First Lady of Wisconsin, Kathy Evers, met with all of our groups and got pictures with our Holiday Brass, our Winter Winds, our festive flutes. What else we got? We got the Chamber Orchestra and the Holiday Carollers. So those five groups. So we had about 90 students overall that went. And we've been doing that pretty much every year, but this is the first year to be part of the Tree Lighting Ceremony, so we hope that can happen again. One little note, a couple of things about, you notice I didn't conduct the group. So what we tried to do, I could conduct them, for sure, but what I, from the very beginning, I think we had seven students the first year, like 12 or so years ago. And the idea was that they would listen to each other and perform as a team, as an ensemble, and work that way. So they'd have one person begin, and they would all kind of watch that person breathe, and they all play together, and so forth. It does help to have a conductor sometimes, but we've tried to carry on that tradition of not needing a conductor, you know, making myself, you know, superfluous, I hope, to be kind of nice, you know? That's what all teachers want to do, right? For your students. I also want to recognize one of our alums that showed up today and he wanted to play. David Eber was in a group, he's in high school now, been doing this for a while. And I was remarking with Tim Spray earlier that it's been great to have certain families where all the brothers and sisters in that group have come through our program, or been in this group, and so forth, it's been pretty special. So we do have, if you have any questions for us, I can answer those, or I've got one last little thing, so maybe I'll skip to that, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. So since I know Dr. Engel, this is like your second year, still kind of new, but it's our first time performing for you at this thing, we have a little present for you. I'll walk it up. You get your very own Lincoln Holiday Brass t-shirt. It will certainly keep you warm, right? Okay, cool. Well anyways, again, we really appreciate the opportunity to kind of come back and do this again, and hope you enjoyed our selections, and I guess we're going to head on out of here. So we'll try to do it kind of quietly, all right? Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays, thank you. Thank you very much. We're just going to wait a moment for the students to exit. Okay, we'll move on with our agenda. There are no public speakers this evening, so we will move on to the approval of the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the items on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
The Consent Agenda is a mechanism used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. With the motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, the items on the Superintendent's Consent Agenda are approved as presented unless there's objection. Is there an objection? Hearing no objection, the items are approved. We will move on to the Board Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the items on the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
With the motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, the items on the Board Consent Agenda are approved as presented unless there's objection. Is there objection? Hearing none, we will move on then to Item 701, Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE4 Personnel Administration. I'll turn to Dr. Engel.
Thank you, Dr. Menes. So this is our opportunity to present any recommended changes to OE4 Monitoring Report from the administrative perspective, and I'll have Mr. Wenthe come up and present our one limited change, but he can best explain it.
So opener 4.6 states that 100% of regular employees will complete the annual Fall Safe School Module that includes the district personnel policies. And the recommendation is that probably not an obtainable goal, because we have people who leave before they even have a chance. So we, you know, for example, we had a accountant, executive, or assistant who came and was, took another job within three days. So those people always count against us. The recommendation is this. The Human Resources Department is recommending that the indicator be revised to state that 100% of regular employees who are with the district for at least 30 days, starting the traditional school year, will complete the annual Fall Safe Schools Module that includes district personnel policies. That's the recommendation.
Any questions from the Board members?
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wenthe. Are there any recommended changes from the Board on OE4 Personnel Administration? Okay. So then, at the next Board meeting, just as a reminder, that is when we will vote on those changes. This is the opportunity to ask questions and to debate those changes as they come forward. And I believe that is what we have at this point. So then, we will move on to R2, the Academic Performance. So I believe there are some changes from the administration on R2?
Yes, much like OE4, we have a few recommendations, and Dr. Lahaki will present those.
Thank you. Imagine going through your life at the Board meeting, and you see 75% of the crowd leave just before you present each time. So hopefully, I can make this as entertaining as the brass concert, but most likely not. So, yes, November 2.1, demonstrate continuous improvement in core academic areas. So the change for each of the four core academic areas is the same, and it is essentially to clean up the language. When this was originally proposed, the idea was, hey, just so you know, that we'll break down each of these data points by different reference groups. That isn't really a goal, it's just the formatting of how the goals are presented. So each of the indicators for math, ELA, science, and social studies is the same, but know that the results will be broken down, as we've been working on together the last year. For 2.2, another slight change to try to make things a little bit more clear. 2.2 is apply critical thinking and problem-solving skills. The first two indicators would remain the same, but the third, in science, that was a little harder to measure, because we have multiple science assessments in the district, it's part of the Wisconsin Student Assessment System. So we have the Wisconsin Forward for 4th and 8th. For 9th and 10th, we have the ACT Aspire, and for 11th, we have the ACT. The ACT and the ACT Aspire report a little bit different than the Wisconsin Forward. So that's where the language of exceeding or ready comes in with the ACT or an ACT Aspire, whereas with the Wisconsin Forward, the relevant critical thinking category will be reported as proficient and advanced. So it's a bit complicated to try to put that all in the one goal statement, but that's the data you'll see, it's the same data as previous, so it's just a clarification of the statement. 2.3, no recommended changes. College and career readiness.
Any questions from the Board? There are none, thank you, Dr. Lahaki. Are there any recommended changes from the Board for R2? Okay. Hearing none, just like OE4, then we will be discussing and voting on those changes at the next Board meeting. So with that, we will move on to our announcements then. So I will turn it over to Ms. Como for the CISA for Board of Control meeting.
It was actually a pretty boring meeting on November 3rd. It was a lot about talking about the budget, approving the recommended pricing for the district, and going over the Administrator's Report, so same as always.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Ms. Baumann for the Lacrosse Public Education Foundation update.
Yeah, so our last meeting was the day before all of the Gold Star Grants were announced, so even though you've probably seen it in the press already, I think it's important to note, $49,143 were awarded to 21 separate grants. And, you know, reading through all those grants, there's a lot of really worthy, creative ideas, and also kind of a trend, and I don't know if it's new this year, but there seem to be a lot of requests for like, reading readiness, writing, and other kind of social, emotional, foundational needs. But I'll list a few of the ones that I thought were particularly cool. So $7,000 was awarded to Joshua Heine and Oliver Strassman out of Northwoods to build a walking path, and this is a really cool project, because it was the result of students like visioning what they would want out of like an outdoor learning experience. So Oliver Strassman is a student in 4th grade, and he co-wrote that grant, which was, you know, pretty amazing. Other grants ranged, you know, from like just under $4,000 to lacrosse polytechnic to promote the learning of geometry, geology, and geography through photography? Try to say that super fast. And then kind of also about $400 to promote science and nutrition through planting of fruit trees and shrubs at Summit Environmental. So there's like this range, but also that underlying current of those like, kind of foundational classroom need things. That's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. I do not have any announcements at this time. Dr. Engel?
Just a couple of general things. Our winter break for our students runs from December 23rd to January 2nd, and there are a few days in there that the Board Office will be closed, December 23rd, 24th, and 25th. And the other days, the office will be open, somebody will be in there, so if you have any needs, or papers to turn in, or whatever else that may be, we'll have that space manned and ensure that we're open to the public.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Planning.
Make a motion to approve the January 3rd, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second.
With the motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the January 3rd, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried. Dr. Cooper Stoll, I'm going to assume we could probably dispense with the debriefing this evening, since there really wasn't much. Oh, good, thank you. Well then, I will turn it over to you. Well, then, I will turn it over to you.
And I was working hard to come up with it, Dr. Jimenez, for this brief meeting.
Thank you.
But as regards to the question as to what worked well for the board this evening, I would say that the ways in which the changes for those policies were presented, I know we've talked for a while about what method would be most beneficial in order to do that, and I think that that worked really well, actually, because it gave everyone a chance to ask questions if they had it or to respond. So, that's something that went well, and hopefully, we'll continue that. Thank you.
No, I think that's great. Thank you very much. I will open up for others for debriefing if there's anything to add, but I, with a short meeting, it's really hard to add in the debriefing, but anybody want to add anything? Hearing none, then we will adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody, and we will go to our workshop.